Hello, everyone. If I could call to order tonight's public hearing regarding the district safety plan in the Oswego City School District Regular Board of Education meeting. Tom Chapa.
Here.
Dave Crispoli.
Here.
Pamela Dowd.
Here.
Lisa Glidden.
Here.
Jim McKenzie.
Here.
Sean Amek.
Here.
Heidi Sweeney.
Here.
If I could pass it along to Dr. Kelvin.
Good evening, board. Thank you for coming this evening. At this time, what we'd like to do is go through, walk through our required district-wide safety plan. Each year, school districts are required to review their safety plans and have an actual open meeting, a hearing, and that is this meeting today. And then, once we're all set, there's a period of time where the plan kind of just kind of sits there, and then we come back and bring it at another board meeting for final approval. Again, a state requirement, and there is a template that we kind of go through to outline what the different pieces are in the plan. So tonight, we're going to walk through this tonight, Amanda and I, and I want to thank all of the people who were responsible for the plan. We have a whole committee that came together, that sat together, just to review the different pieces. And as we were reviewing, we also found that there are some items you'll hear at the end that we'd like to work on this year to make our plan even better for the next school year. So you'll hear that as we move along. Want to be clear, there's nothing more important to us than the health and safety of our students, and as we kind of went through the plan, we certainly kept that in mind, especially given the times that we're in today. So I'm going to turn over the mic and we'll do a little bit of partnership tonight between Amanda and I, and we'll kind of go forward with the information. So if I can get the, there we go. So we'll start first with the purpose and scope. Go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to actually reference the screen that way, even though Dr. Kelvin is referencing that way, just to make it a little bit easier. But as Dr. Kelvin said, tonight's hearing is fulfilling our annual obligation, according to Commissioner's Regulation 155.17, to have our district-wide safety plan reviewed by the Board of Education first, and then posted for public comment. As Dr. Kelvin also suggested, the plan really focuses first and foremost importantly on our student safety, preventative measures, response measures, and then our recovery measures in the event of an actual emergency. Each school building is also required to develop a building-level emergency response plan, but those are kept confidential to the school buildings and the personnel within.
Matt. Let's see. A clicker. Thank you, Matt. All right, components of our plan. Go ahead.
So in summary, the components of the plan really is comprised of four components. The first section of the plan are general considerations and planning guidelines that we are required to follow in developing. The rest of the plan, the rest of the plan, as I said, focuses on risk reduction, followed by our responses in the event of a true emergency, and then how we recover, how we analyze and hold post-incident incidences, debrief sessions to evaluate our response and any changes that we need to make to the plan following an emergency. Section two really is the bulk of the plan and talks about how the district collectively prevents incidences of both student behaviors that might be violent and disruptive in the school place, but also in our physical settings. We have identified areas that can be hazardous to students, and part of the plan is to provide our first responders and our emergency management personnel with maps and floor plans of our buildings, and so that they are also equipped to respond in the event of an emergency. So what I'm going to do is just really give you an overview of each of the sections, and then, like Dr. Kelvin said, where we will make improvements for next year.
So just to kind of, again, look at those different sections. So we have those general considerations and planning guidelines. So we talk about in the plan, our purpose, our safety teams. We do have safety teams that meet in each of our buildings, as well as a district-wide safety team. The district chain of command, and Amanda will go over that in just a moment, the plan's review and public comment that are also a part of the work that we have to do. In section two of this plan, again, as Amanda's talked about, there are some risk and reduction, prevention, intervention strategies that we use. We work to try to prevent concerns from happening. So in each of our school buildings, we do work with our principals and our staff to provide training and support for them. We have drills, exercises that people, that our entire community does go through. We have school security in place for all of our buildings. We've talked a lot about that this year, how we wanted to reallocate or put folks in our schools. Early detection of potential violent behaviors, hazardous identification. In terms of responses, notification and activation during an emergency, how do we respond when an emergency comes to port? And then, emergency response procedures and protocols that we follow. In each of our schools, we train our staff on those procedures and those pieces. So Amanda talked about recovery. So post an incident, we do have guidelines already established that we do go through and talk with our staff about, and then objectives. There are certain objectives that we do identify whenever we've had an incident that occurs. So there may be some folks from our community who'd like to see all of those different things. There's a lot of information in the plan that we do not share, not because we don't want to share, but it might put at risk the health and safety of our community. So you won't see that, the community would not be able to see that. Okay? Okay. Now, in terms of our chain of command, we do have a chain of command. Go ahead.
So the following slides really highlight probably the most important points for folks to be aware of from each section of the safety plan. So from the first section, probably the most important point for folks to be aware of is the district's chain of command in the event of an emergency. Dr. Kelvin, as our superintendent of schools, becomes the chief emergency officer in the event of an emergency. In his absence, that responsibility would fall to me, and then subsequently to our director, executive director of business and finance, followed by our executive director of personnel or curriculum. When Dr. Kelvin or chief emergency officer has been notified of an emergency, he then becomes the incident commander and really takes control of the situation, activating the appropriate procedures that are supposed to take place within the emergency plan, directing our emergency response personnel. And did I just lose power?
I think he's trying to work on that now. Try again, Amanda.
Am I back on?
One moment there.
Yes and no.
One second.
Testing.
There you go.
All right. Here we go. So, as I was saying, so in the event of an emergency, Dr. Kelvin becomes our chief emergency officer. His responsibilities are then to activate appropriate procedures as they are outlined in the safety plan, to direct our emergency response actions, and then also he becomes the lead liaison with our emergency first responders when they arrive on the scene. From section two, probably the most important takeaway is the district's risk reduction and prevention strategies. As I said, the sections two and three really, and four really focus on risk reduction, response, and then recovery. So in terms of risk reduction, we have a number of, I think, services and programs in place within the district as preventative measures to meet the needs of students in terms of behavior, mental health, and resources, in terms of access to alternative programs. This list is not intended to be all-encompassing in terms of the services that we provide to our students, but they are some of the most impactful. We do have a director of student support services, who really is the lead on many of our mental health, SEL, and other support services that we provide to our students, particularly those who we see are struggling with behaviors or emotional crises. Our webpage is a source of a lot of information for families and for staff in terms of our dignity act, in terms of our tip line, where students can either report electronically or there is a hotline number for students to call in the event that they are experiencing a crises and want to reach out for help, or have witnessed something that they want to report. We do encourage students and staff to, if they see something, to say something and make that report. There are also mental health resources available to parents on our website, under the parent resources, if they identify that their students are struggling in mental health crises. We do offer our students, beyond that, a variety of extracurricular activities in an effort to get students connected to their school, to their teachers, and to their peers, and to be able to sort of build a network of folks that they can rely on. When appropriate, we offer small group or individual counseling to students. And then, of course, our code of conduct really outlines the behaviors and the expectations that we have for students in the school place, and we're working on more explicitly developing what the appropriate responses from the school building are to behaviors in the code of conduct. Most of our elementary schools offer one form of character education program or another. I think that varies a little bit by school building. And then, of course, in our most extreme circumstances, we do have alternative programs that children can access. As a general measure, for each of the school buildings, we are required to engage in training and drills and exercises, both for staff specifically, and then with staff and students. Safe Schools Annual Training is training that is required of each of our faculty members. That training includes information on what to look for and how to identify students who are struggling with mental health crises, students who may be at risk of an unsafe home situation, students who might be experiencing bullying and harassment in school, and behaviors and characteristics that we would look for in those students. In preparation for an actual emergency in a school building, each of our schools is required to engage in 12 emergency drills per year, and those drills consist of what you see here in terms of general evacuation, what we consider the traditional fire drill, shelter-in-place drills, lockdown drills, and lockout drills as well.
So just in terms of building security measures, there are certain things that we do to make sure that everybody is safe when they enter our building. First of all, we have visitor access, a single point of entries for all of our schools. There's a single area that everyone should enter the building within, and when they come into the school, there is a screening that's done. We actually have a system where they take their ID, and they have to slide their ID through the system, a raptor, and that helps us to get information about the person who's coming in the building as well. Staff responsibilities are also reviewed annually to make sure that we have the right people in place who can help us with securing entry into our schools. We have school monitors, and like particularly here in our high school, we have a security staff, as well as school resource officers in our buildings. The raptor system, you heard me talk about already with visitor access. We have a number of different security devices. We do have cameras around our buildings, in addition to staff, to help us to secure our sites. We have a blue light system that's in place on the main campus here. If you walk around the campus, you'll see outside a blue light security system that's there in case there are some challenges that are going on outside or inside the building that, when that light goes off, it lets the community know that we have some challenges going on. And then, we have a new panic alarm system, program that is coming online in the fall, Rapid Responder, and that system will hopefully, the goal is to make sure that we can respond rapidly whenever there's a difficulty and inform our responders right away when we are having some challenges in our schools. Hazardous behavior in situation? Go right ahead.
Sure. So part of the plan outlines hazardous behavior and situation detection and assessment in terms of what to look for in the event that an incident is brewing but has not yet occurred. And so, the plan outlines what some potentially violent behaviors might look like with students. It is certainly not intended to be a checklist of if you see this behavior in a student, then that student is, you know, prone to violence, but really, a combination of many of these behaviors taken together might be a warning sign, and those are more explicitly outlined in the plan, what some of those behaviors are. As I mentioned, we encourage students and staff to see something or say something if they are aware of friends in crises, or they overhear in the hallway or in classes things that are happening, what they see on social media, they should certainly make the school aware. Violent behaviors or behaviors that are outside the acceptable behavior of the code of conduct, or behavior in school is outlined within the code of conduct. And then, as I previously mentioned, sources of potential emergencies have been surveyed throughout the district in terms of areas of potential physical hazards that might be present in the district. Site maps and floor plans have provided to our local emergency responders so that they are equipped with that information upon arrival. And then, as I previously stated, each building develops their own building-level emergency response plan.
So whenever there is a concern that develops, we do have a response, activation, and notification process. So one of the things that we do, we make sure we do, is we contact law enforcement, emergency services in the event of an emergency. We also do an internal and external notifications. My office, whenever we hear something, it's our goal to get stuff out to people right away so that everyone in the organization knows what is going on. The goal is to keep everybody safe, you know, and we send that information to district sites, where necessary, to the state education department, and often, whenever there's something that's happening, you'll hear from me right away. The goal is to make sure that we notify all of our parents, all of our community members, so there's always a follow-up whenever we've had an incident that's occurred at one of our schools that involves safety. And then, we do have an emergency response procedures and protocols guide that we ask our staff to follow through with. We train the staff on those pieces in terms of emergency responses, how should they respond when certain things happen, and also protocols. The other thing I want to add to is that we do work with our students as well. One of the things that we have is a confidential hotline that students can call, or their parents can call, and we do post that hotline phone number around in our district schools throughout the year, and the goal is to make sure if they see something, that they can say something and do so anonymously as well. Okay? So after an incident, we certainly want to make sure we can recover. We'll talk about recovery strategies.
Sure. So one of the critical things after an emergency situation is to debrief when the dust has settled, both how the plan played out and how the district responded, looking for areas in terms of staff and student training, and where the plan may need to be updated. So we evaluate the incident with the collective district administration to debrief how processes and protocols played out. Evaluation of the incident internally and with law enforcement and emergency services who responded to the incident to provide us feedback, and all of that is really with the intention of making sure that our plan did what it was supposed to do and look for areas where we can do better. Hopefully, there won't be a next time, but if there is where we can do better in the event of a repeat incident. As I said, so that we can both revise our emergency plan, but also look for areas where we may need to provide staff with professional development or exercises, what they call tabletop exercises in terms of planning for emergencies, and areas where we may need to alter, update, or modify the drills that we do with students so that they are well-equipped to respond how we need to in an emergency.
So as I said at the beginning of the presentation, there are some areas that after we've kind of met and talked this year that we want to develop and work on to refine for the next school year, and if possible, this year as well, right? So a couple of things that we want to work on is, first of all, creating language that aligns with the Alyssa laws. There is new guidance out there that says that, you know, schools must consider silent panic alarm systems in their school settings, and so we want to develop that language. We're going to need to work with our attorney to help to make sure that that information is put in the right organizational documents, and that we make sure that folks understand what we're doing that does align to that law as well. The second thing is we want to create some language that includes plans for remote instruction. Want to talk about that?
So we are required, not for this year, but for next school year, and so the planning would come this year, that outlines how we would approach remote instruction to continue learning for all students, whether it's in the event of a physical or emergency or in response to a pandemic emergency. Let's hope that doesn't happen again, but in the event that it does, we are now required to have that language within the plan. So the goal will be to develop that with the district-wide safety committee this year so that we're ready for implementation of it next year. And do you want me to speak to the next point as well? The same is true for the other bullet points, the second, third bullet points really are closely tied together in terms of expanding and clarifying the protocol for a state disaster emergency involving a communicable disease. That is more around the labor law and in terms of essential workers, and how we will ensure that we have the right staff in place to continue education for our students in the event that we are in a state of a disaster again for a communicable disease. So those bullets really are closely tied together.
So we have some work to do this year, and we will work through each of those bullets. Okay? So with that said, those are the elements from the state plan that we have to, you know, make sure that we share in public with our board, and also post online for any public comment. Any questions from the board? Any questions at all, or any thoughts? Everybody okay? All right. So what we'll do is we'll go ahead and post this information then on our website. We'll ask the community for feedback, and then, if there are revisions that need to be made, we'll make the revisions, and we'll bring the final plan back to the board for approval. If we're all set with everybody. Okay? All right. Thank you, Amanda, for your efforts. I appreciate it. And thank you again to the committee that worked on this. So I think we're all set.
Next on the agenda is the regular board meeting for tonight, and if I could have everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under one single objective, liberty and justice for all.
Next, I believe the board members are going to executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to move to executive session, discuss the personnel matter.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. You may move to executive session if you go right across the hallway to the classroom. Thank you.
At this time, could I have a motion to adjourn executive session?
We had a motion at 5:58.
5:58?
Heidi made the first, had the motion. Pam, second.
Who was second? I'm sorry.
Pam. Pam was second.
Could I have a motion to return to regular session?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is floor to the public. It is expected that the speakers will conduct themselves in a civil manner and will be ruled out of order for any statement that constitutes a direct threat against officers, employees, or students of the school district, or that is obscene. No personal tax will be tolerated, nor should any speaker address specific district personnel or students by name or suggestion. Questions or comments concerning matters that are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and referred to the superintendent for appropriate action. Members of the community may comment on any matter related to district business. The board president may request a brief description of the topic the speaker plans to address. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single sports spokesperson. Presentation should be as brief as possible and the speaker will be permitted to speak, will not be, I'm sorry, permitted to speak for longer than three minutes. First on the list, I have Tammy and Connor Griffin. If you could come to the mic, state your name and address, please.
We just signed in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Stephen Woodward. And name and address, please.
Stephen Woodward, 23, Meany Circle in Oswego. I'm here to talk in support of Coach Babcock. My, I've had two daughters go through this school since 2009. The oldest one went through the basketball program and never even finished it. Coach after coach after coach. Consistency is just not something that happens in this program. You have a coach now that's been with this program for a long time. I got a senior going into this right now. She's really doesn't, she's not outward spoken to anybody, but he's got her to get there. Amanda's got her there. And Coach Lav's got her there. And now she's gonna have that yanked out from underneath her, from somebody who has no ties to this district. So you need to take that under consideration, that you have a coach that's dedicated to this program, and he needs to stay in his position. Thank you.
Next is Sophia Babcock.
My name is Sophia Babcock. I'm one of the captains of the girls varsity basketball team. I'm here today to stand up for my dad, Coach Babcock. Coach Babcock has a true passion for this great game of basketball, and that's why I've developed a great passion as well. I was introduced to this game at a very young age, and the fundamentals and skills that I, that he instilled in me through the years is why I was voted a first team all league player last season. He's not only worked with me at a young age, but also worked with many of the girls standing behind me at a young age. Most people do not witness the behind the scenes that I am privy to. The hours of planning practices, game strategies, extra work with us athletes, team bonding activities, sleepless nights after game losses, wondering what call he could have made to lead the team to be more successful. Once again, Coach Babcock is my dad, and I have a strong home family life. And he's built that family tie into this basketball program. You see, this isn't just a basketball team. This is a true family. Coach Babcock, Coach Reno, Coach Lavder, and the players behind me, and the ones that couldn't make it tonight, we're a family. Not only do we lose Coach Babcock, we lose our longtime assistant coach, Coach Reno. She will leave if he's not the coach, which is horrible. It saddens me to see my dad, Coach Babcock, treated like this. But it's also cool to see how strong he still stands under this adversity. This is the reason not only I, but my teammates look up to and admire Coach Babcock for his strength and fortitude. The thoughts of not having a season has taken a toll on me, as I have had sleepless nights since I found out that Coach Babcock was not chosen as the candidate. All this news has stressed me out to the point where I feel sick all day. Basketball isn't just a passion of mine, it's a huge part of my life. And without Coach Babcock and Coach Reno, it will not be the same. At the end of the day, Coach Babcock will remain my dad, and we will always be family. But if we allow him to be removed as the head coach of this team, then our basketball family will be not only broken, but devastated. I couldn't be more proud of my dad, Coach Babcock.
Next is Adriana Ellis.
The Oswego City School District Commission. Educate, inspire, and empower all students. This team has been empowered to speak on behalf of Joe Babcock, the coach who needs support and love. We deserve to have our voices heard as we speak about how without Coach Babcock, our core and strength will be broken. As a senior who has been playing for the Oswego Girls Basketball Team since eighth grade, the most support I have received has been from Coach Babcock, who put his entire heart and soul into leading us throughout our high school years. Without Coach Babcock, we won't only lose our coach who taught us to stand up to a situation like this, where we know our voices need to be heard and our opinion matters. I'm gonna start crying. Sorry. But we will lose the bond our coaches created to keep this program together as one. As one of the captains for the varsity girls basketball team, I stand with and speak for our team as we share with you how the program and our lives will most be impacted by the decision to take away our coach. Coach Babcock has taught us, five plays, one, how to stick together, and with his encouragement and powerful passion for this game, we learned how to stand strong when adversity hits. So here I stand as a voice for the young women who know Coach Babcock, who not only spent three months with him on season, but at team bonding, summer leagues, and open gyms. Our families are also here supporting us and Coach Babcock, not because we asked them to, but because they support a coach that has his players going home with a positive attitude, even after a hard loss, because the environment our coach created is one of open hands. After a ball is thrown away, a shot is blocked, or a foul is made at the worst possible moment. An environment that is not of reprimanding and shaming, but of encouragement to try harder, telling us to keep our heads up high, check our body language, and never give up. Those of you may know Joe Babcock, but without being in our practices, games, or team bondings, you don't know Coach Babcock. Coach, we all stand to here today to debate, stay, improve. It's coach well worth waiting for, fighting for, and not giving up on. Thank you.
Next is Allison, or yeah, Allison Bruins.
Hello. My name is Allison Brunz. I'm 17 years old, and I'm a captain for the varsity girls basketball team. I've been playing basketball since third grade. Coach Babcock has been my coach since fifth grade, and I'm going into my senior year of high school this year. To say that I'm devastated is an understatement. I'm heartbroken that my fellow players and I have to go through this, that we have to fight so hard to play varsity basketball with the coach that we want. It shouldn't be like this. We shouldn't be crying and anxious over this decision. And you, the board, don't understand the turmoil that will be felt if you don't overturn this decision. Not only are you hurting Coach Babcock himself and his players, but you're also hurting Coach Lavner and Coach Reno, who have built relationships with Coach Babcock, who have helped him build this program. We, the players, would lose Coach Reno too if you go through with this. Someone who is very important to us. You have the power to overturn this. And if you claim that you make decisions in the best interest of the students and players, then you would realize how detrimental this decision would be. I don't want to play basketball this year without Coach Babcock and Coach Reno. Alex Woodward, Adriana Ellis, Riley Reynolds, Sophia Babcock, and Sidney Hofer, along with myself, don't want to play our senior years of high school basketball without this coach and Coach Reno. Coach Babcock has lived in Oswego his whole life. He's played basketball for Oswego High School. There's no one else more fitted for this position than him. He knows all of us so well. Please listen to us. Please do the right thing. Please don't break us up. Let us play with the coach that we want and the coach that's best for this position. That's all we ask of you guys. Thank you.
Maria Warner. Thank you. Abby Anmet.
Hi, I'm Abby Anmet. I'm in eighth grade, and I go to the middle school. I just wanted to start off by saying that Coach Bab, Coach Babcock, Coach Babcock really changed my life. I used to walk into his practice with no confidence, knowing that all these girls were better than me. But he showed me that no matter what skill level I was at, or what I couldn't and could do, to always be confident and to always have fun. Coach Babcock has done so much for us. He built up this program, and it would all be ruined without Coach Babcock. He changed me into the person and the player I am today. He would teach me everything I had to do, and he taught me how to make the basic skills more advanced. A few people have told me how much Coach Babcock have made them fall out of love with the sport. But for me, he made me love the sport more than I ever did. This is exactly why Oswego needs Joe Babcock. We are family.
Madison Casaleta.
Hi, my name is Madison Casaleta. I'm here today on behalf of my coach. I'm here to defend him, and I'm here to explain the extent of this decision and how it will truly impact our community as a whole. Today, we are surrounded by many who think the same, that we cannot continue to thrive without our coach. I beg you to please overturn this decision. The girls' basketball program has been able to persevere because Coach Babcock has had our backs. I don't think I've ever had a coach as dedicated as him. I've grown so much as a player and a person because I've been surrounded by such a good support group who pushes me to be my very best. Coach Lavner, Coach Babcock, and Coach Reno have become my family. The girls I spend almost every day with have become my sisters. I truly love every moment I spend with these people. I love these people. During COVID, there were days where I couldn't get out of bed, and I was the most depressed I've ever been. Coach Babcock fought to have open gyms, and I believe I'm still alive today because Joe and everyone a part of our team gave me the will and want to be better, to work on myself physically and mentally. Basketball has been my rock, but to me, it wasn't about winning or playing time. It was about the people. And Coach Babcock is the only person I know fit for this job.
Next is Jill Heward Bruins, Bruins?
Brunz.
Brunz. Thank you.
Members of the board. My name is Jill Heward Brunz, parent of Allison Brunz. As the parent of one of the six senior players, I ask you, why is this varsity girls basketball team and their beloved coach, Joe Babcock, and Reno, Coach Reno, going through this again? It was absolutely heartbreaking last year's season to be stunned by Joe not getting the coaching position, then after a vigorous campaign, being approved, and then the girls missing a vital week's worth of practice that no doubt was detrimental at the beginning of that season. We are now completely floored again and devastated by this decision, by the athletic committee to choose a different coach for the '22-'23 season. And once again, the varsity girls basketball team and coaching staff are blindsided by the athletic committee that did not fully take into consideration the hard work, relationship building, and the sacrifices of the players, coaches, and parents have made throughout the years. In addition, I have questions and concerns about the possible alternative coach. Who is this person? Where is he from? What are his credentials? It is my understanding that he doesn't even live in our community. Joe Babcock has been a lifetime resident of Oswego. More importantly, Joe has worked with the majority of these girls since fifth grade. Joe has devoted himself towards building and sustaining a competitive girls varsity program. I can speak for my daughter. She does not want to spend her senior year, her last year in high school, playing her most favorite sport with a new coach, having to start all over again building those relationships. It will cause her great stress and anxiety for her, and most likely for other members of the team. I can't help but think that students are under enough stress returning to school amidst COVID continuation and recent violence plaguing schools in general. I truly believe this is a drastic, this drastic change will be damaging to the girls varsity sports, of girls varsity basketball program for this upcoming season. It may not even be sustainable this year. As a longstanding member and supporter of this community and high school sports, I urge you to reconsider the appointment and restore Joe Babcock as the varsity girls varsity coach. Thank you very much.
Next is Nathan Devini.
Hello, my name is Nathan Devini. I graduated this spring, and I've been playing basketball for Oswego since I was in seventh grade. Basketball is a game of building, building relationships, teams, and overall program. Within this school district, I've continued to see a terrible communication between the board and coaches. I've consistently seen coaches being fired with no notice or for no reason. It simply does not seem possible for a program to be built with the way coaches are treated. For example, I know some of you guys are teachers, and as you teach, the first couple of years, you learn to bring the students together and learn the best way possible in the hopes for the greatest success. You learn more and more every year until you build a program. And the more and more you build this program, the more successful academics are. If teachers are being replaced and taken out, you think that you guys would do as successful in classes? Probably not, right? No. I know Coach Babcock since I was in ninth grade. I've seen, ever since I met him, he's always believed in me more than I have. Brought me confidence that is priceless. He was, he always offered to help and sacrificed his own time to make me a better player. I'm not even on his team, but he's just always put out a helping hand and to make us better. When my team was down this year, he would always bring everyone together and give us the guidance we needed to get back on our feet. I've always been envious of anyone who was able to play for him, and taking that away would just be a crime. I don't know if you guys care about basketball at all or sports around here, but I hope you guys all care about community. And like, look at this. This is pretty awesome. So the support for one guy and one coach is just, it's, you can't match it. So that's what I gotta say.
That's...
Before we move to the next speaker, we're at the 15-minute point for our floor to the public. I don't know how many people are still on the list, but if we want to continue, well, I guess, are there still people on the list? And then if yes, we would need a motion from the board to continue the public comments section for like another series of minutes.
Yes, there's five more people on the list.
Okay. So is there a motion from someone on the board to continue the public comment period for 10 more minutes?
Yeah. I would.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Opposed. Next on the list is Amanda Reno.
My name is Amanda Reno. I am the volunteer assistant coach of the girls varsity basketball team. Coach Babcock took me on as an assistant his first year coaching JV, and the following season, Coach Lavner joined our staff. I don't think a day has passed since we started where the three of us haven't spoken. Coach Babcock has been a mentor to me. I grew up in this town, played basketball here. I attribute many of my current successes to those years I spent getting pushed by both my coaches and my teammates. As a kid, you don't always see it, but as the years pass by and you're out on your own, it clicks. Those people helped shape me into who I am today. I wanted to have the same impact. Coach Babcock walked into a broken program where the graduating seniors had three different coaches throughout their high school careers. We were rebuilding from that moment on. The kids wanted to work hard for him, and he wanted to work hard for them. You know, success You know, success isn't always about winning. I believe success comes from gratification. Success is going home at night knowing you worked hard, that you gave everything, and that you learned something. The feeling I got from Coach Babcock in the gym reminded me of the one I grew up in, the one that taught you a million more things than what to do when you were up by one with 20 seconds left in a game. You can't build a foundation without trust, and you can't build trust without consistency. This program needs consistency above all else. In a world where uncertainty exists more and more for our children, we must provide stability where we can. These kids need consistency, not a roller coaster ride wondering what next season brings. They need a group of dedicated people to show up and continue to show up, not just today, not tomorrow, not next year, but for the foreseeable future. Not just for the season, but for all year long. The dedication Coach Babcock shows to his players and the future of this program is unmatched. He holds open gyms throughout the year, meets with youth coaches' summer league, and holds individual training sessions all on his own time. More importantly, Coach Babcock continues to develop Coach Lavner, myself, and a number of youth coaches in the community. By aligning all levels with the same offensive schemes and fundamentals, he is creating a true program for girls' basketball. The bond he has with this family was supposed to be unbreakable. He has poured his heart and soul into coaching, and it would be a shame for the program to lose him. He has created a culture that any player or coach longs to be a part of, in an environment any parent can be proud to send their children into. I don't know who he is up against here, but what I can tell you is that even if it were Jim Bayheim, I would be standing here giving the same speech. He has been a mentor to not only me, but to the kids as well. We win together, lose together, play together, stay together. Five plays, one. We, not me. Family. His words ingrained into all of us to apply both today and for the rest of our lives. As I reflect on the years Coach Babcock, Coach Lavner, and myself have spent doing this together, I can't help but feel proud of where Coach Babcock has taken this program today. Although the path of success of the program has been a team effort, we would not be where we are today without Coach Babcock's hard work, dedication, and determination. I will close with this. The anxiety I have seen from these girls over the last few days has been truly heartbreaking, but the outpouring of love for Coach Babcock has been very telling of where this should stand. I am not alone here in saying that I believe in him and all that he stands for. Thank you.
Next is Stephen Joya III.
Board of Ed, as was just stated, I'm Steve Joya III. Not only am I a local business owner, supporter of all the BUCK events that go on and BUCK booster programs, I'm also the president of the Oswego YMCA, so I know what you guys deal with all the time as far as your board decisions and unfortunately, some unilateral decisions as well. I started at Riley Elementary School, Oswego Middle School, Oswego High School, SUNY Oswego. And coincidentally, my 20-year high school reunion was just two days ago. When I was roaming these halls back in 2002, there was a word that was thrown around a lot: "towny." People that didn't really know what they were going to do, or they were staying around here, they weren't going to college, or they were going to local college, but they weren't leaving. That was something that was always said derogatory, even by me, people like us. And the older I got, I realized how naive I was because I didn't realize there were people that were here because they wanted to be here. They wanted to be a part of this community, they wanted to help it grow, and they wanted to give back. Now, what's more Oswego than Joe Babcock? Graduated in '86, played basketball. He bleeds BUCK blue. Now, because I know we're short on time in closing, I'd just like to say, after my reunion, I was very, very surprised at the number of classmates that were sending their kids to CBA based on decisions that were being made. That is sickening to somebody like me who bleeds BUCK blue. I don't want to lose potential great Oswigonians to CBA. And then finally, my biggest concern here is that a very dangerous precedent of nepotism is rearing its ugly head, and I do not want to see it continue here in Oswego. I think Joe Babcock has done a great job, and he deserves his chance to continue.
Next is Joe Babcock.
I am Coach Babcock. The girls' varsity coaching position was posted on May 18th. The posting went through the protocol and came down with me as the only candidate. But the job got reposted July 1st, and a new candidate, not from this area, applied for the girls' coaching position. I was notified via email that I had to interview for this position I've held for the past three years. I interviewed Thursday, August 11th. I walked out of that interview as confident as I could ever be. I was told I should hear by Tuesday, the 16th. I got an email from the AD on the 17th that said they're still working through the process of hiring a coach, and when they reach a decision, they'll be in touch. Well, I never got that courtesy phone call. Friday, the 19th, I was at my house, and I checked the agenda online, and that's when I saw the candidate's name, and it wasn't mine. I was shocked, to say the least. The AD did reach out Monday afternoon. A quick look into what my girls' basketball program has dealt with the past few years. 2020-21 season, our district decided we would only have varsity basketball, no modified or JV season. This really hurt skill development for our girls, but at the time, COVID was getting bad, and I understood the decision. COVID stopped our season for extended periods of time. Last season, we finished our season with six straight games with no practices. This led to many wins, but we made sure the kids had an enjoyable season. Last summer, we played the Beeville Summer League just to get the girls back on the court. We struggled and conceded the lack of skill development from no offseason training, with our backs against the wall, no making excuses. Instead, we talked about adversity, controlling what we could control, and doing all we could do to build this thing back. After last season, I called a coaches' meeting. I talked about an extended offseason for skill development as COVID seemed to be getting better. Our coaching staff collaborated and developed a success plan. I started open gyms three weeks after the season ended. I ran them twice a week for two hours for the past six months, and we also played in the Beeville Summer League. We also developed skills and drills practice once a week for our third through sixth-grade girls. After going 1-5 last summer, we went 5-1 this past summer, and we were finally able to have a true offseason. Other summer coaches complimented me on the drastic change. This is not a three-month job. This is a 12-month job. I'm not here to make excuses because my players know I hate excuses. I'm here presenting facts. Our program has dealt with severe adversity, but we sit here today as a unified basketball family, fighting for a coach to put his heart, his soul, his blood, his sweat, and his tears into this program and those kids. All my evaluations since I've been here have been rated in the highest category called "highly effective." This whole thing today isn't about me, it's about these kids. In a day and age where parents and players are the ones who are trying to get a coach fired, here are my parents and players, standing tall and strong for a coach that they respect and parents that trust me with their kids, and that means the world to me. Thank you for your time.
Next, excuse me, next will be Monica Morse.
I apologize, I was just finding you.
And Peyton Bond.
Hello, my name is Peyton Bond, and I am an incoming freshman. Today, this team has been empowered to speak on behalf of the coach we want and love. We deserve to be heard. We are a family, and without Coach Babcock and Coach Reno, sorry, this family will be broken, and none of us want that. I was really looking forward to this upcoming season, and we have all been putting in so much work with Coach Babcock and Coach Reno. We've had a great spring and summer season as a coach who is a coach who, well beyond the three to four months he's getting paid. Coach coats to modified games and attends the games to our elementary school girls as well. He has truly invented in our success on and off the court. Even before he ever coached a varsity game, he came to my youth practice at the park. We all look forward to playing for him, even when he wasn't the coach. Please make this right, we need our coach. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Again, just want to kind of share a couple of things. We have some guests here that we're going to bring up in just a moment. So, just to shift gears a little bit, first, I want to just share with the board and the community that we have now moved to complete our summer programming, that our programs did end on last Friday, and now we're moving forward with preparations for the upcoming school year. Calendars, class lists, schedules, teacher assignments, all of those pieces of information are now being mailed out to the community. Capitol project work is still being completed. We are moving forward diligently to get buildings ready and all set for the upcoming school year. I was over at Charles E. Riley just yesterday, and also at Fitzhugh Park School. Walked through the school, lots of things are being transformed, lots of work completed, but we still have some other items that we need to kind of work through. But we're moving forward. Our goal is to try to make sure we get everything up and running and ready to go for kids just prior to our start of the year. School orientations are also scheduled and taking place. We had one, I believe, at the middle school, if I remember correctly, today. We had multiple ones at the middle school, and several of our schools are having orientations for parents who are coming to the schools for the first time. So, still moving ahead with that. And also, well, there was a change. We got some Department of Health recommendations prior to this PowerPoint being completed. I believe I sent those recommendations out to all of, and guidance informational pieces out to all the board members. Just to let you know that we will be sending a letter out to our parents. Tomorrow is what our plan is, to get information out to them, to let them know what the latest Department of Health recommendations are. Basically, they've tried to align as much as they can with CDC recommendations, and a lot of things that we had in place before have changed. So, social distancing requirements, they have now been taken away. COVID-19 isolation for folks unless you are actually positive has been changed, those protocols. Masking indoors, so there's some recommendations if people would like to do so, but the requirements right now are for whenever you've tested positive for COVID. For 10 days, you should isolate for five days and then wear masks for the next five days, and that's similar to what happened last year. And then the testing requirements have changed. Schools are not required to test anymore, staff or students. So, a bunch of things happening, and we'll share all of this information out with our community over the next couple of days here. You know, in terms of COVID-19 expectations, you know, our goal is to get every student back into schools, you know, this year. We would like to see everybody back. Now, whenever our students are ill and are demonstrating COVID-19 symptoms, what we'd like to do is to continue with "Hey Tutor." I believe that information is in your package this evening. We found that program to work really well, especially for our elementary students. For our secondary students, seven through 12, what we are looking to do is actually use our tutoring staff to support those students. We did watch our numbers last year, and we saw a lot of the tutoring requirements go down as the year kind of went forward, so we'll be watching and monitoring. But just wanted to let you know that in terms of tutorial supports for kids when they're positive, we will still have those supports in place. My recommendation is also that we continue to provide supports for students who have extenuating circumstances. We know that we're going to have some children for medical reasons who really will not be able to be back still, unfortunately, in the environment. And so, for those situations, we'd like to continue what we've done last year. They have to provide a note. That information is vetted through our doctors, and then we do have some programs that are offered through City Bosses. I think we used synergy last year as the title. And/or, if we have our tutoring staff that is able to meet the needs better, then we would try to do that. So, we saw a lot more students come back to school last year. We expect even more, and I just wanted to share that information with the board to make sure everybody's okay. Very good? Okay. All right, so we've had our four-part study that is taking place. The first part was on fiscal. We've had the transportation portion, and then energy efficiencies with Siemens, and then we've had program information that was shared by the Castillo and Silky Group. Tonight, with us is the Siemens Group. John is back with us, and he'd like to share some information with us. You have been given a booklet, I believe, at the last board meeting around, you know, a proposed energy program. There's an executive overview that he'd like to share this evening. Someone asked John to come on up and say hi. And we also have several people from King &amp; King who are with us today, who can kind of chime in whenever they need to as well. So, Amy is here from King &amp; King to represent. So, John, you completed the additional information, so if you want to kind of just walk us through that for a couple of minutes, and then we'll take questions from the board. And Amy, if you want to come up with this, whenever you want to.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you. Go ahead.
Yes, so my name is John Parch, and I thank you for the time. I'm here with Paul Rogers. Paul is a part of our engineering team. He's the engineering manager, actually lives not too far from here, so he wanted to join me. So, what we're going to do today is we're just going to kind of walk through the program, just give you kind of a high-level view of it. And essentially, what it is, is it's infrastructure, but with a highlight of energy, right? So, the infrastructure that we really target is infrastructure that reduces your carbon footprint, and hence saves money, and upgrades the environment at the same time. So, the slides that we're going to go through, the first one really just captures what the program is and really what it's about. It's, in New York, it's called Article IX. The program in New York really leverages a way to procure energy infrastructure where the savings that you're benefiting from, you can leverage over 18 years and get aid on top. So, that's really, in a nutshell, what the program is. So, it's a relationship between the district and an ESCO, where the ESCO guarantees those savings so that you can leverage it, and then SED will give you aid after they approve that process and that package. This next slide is really a snapshot on the technical, which I'm going to have Paul review, the technical aspects. So, these are the retrofits that we're proposing to. Some of them are pending, some of them we're feeling really strong about, that they pay really well, and they make a lot of sense, and that's how it's designated here on this matrix.
Thanks, John. So, I'm Paul Rogers. I live down in the Syracuse area, and I wanted to come. As you said, I'm the energy engineering manager for New York and New Jersey, and wanted to express gratitude for the opportunity here, and really looking forward to hopefully earning your business and your trust. I know this is an executive overview, so I really won't get into the weeds. As many details as you'd like to talk about, feel free. Ultimately, looking around, we see some lights burned out, some that are dim. You know, we're going to improve the academic environment for your teachers, your staff, your students here. All the yellow lenses will be gone, you know, a nice, bright, new learning environment with some controls. We'll put some dimming in the classrooms, things like that. Again, ultimately, doing a lot of electrical energy reductions, this first group here. While we're in the gyms, putting in new light fixtures, putting in some de-stratification fans. Again, heat rises, blowing it down to the floor. Vending machine controls, just some real basic things. High-efficiency transformers, if you walk by any of them, you hear the loud humming or feel the heat from them. That's wasted energy, so there's opportunities there to, again, just reduce your utility bills, your electric consumption. On the automation side, you already have some building management systems in place that are controlling your indoor air environment, your temperature is setting back at night. Look to improve a couple of strategies there. And then the next one, digital services, there's a whole thing that I can delve into with that regarding, you know, making sure we're not doing any kind of simultaneous heating and cooling and fault detection and diagnostics. So, a lot of analysis behind the scenes that would save the district from wasted energy. Walk-in freezer cooler controls in your kitchens, again, just optimizing the control there. Work with the board and the district staff, and Dave's former staff there, looking at some of the specific schools that might still be old, pneumatic controls with air compressors that are actually... that are controlling your indoor air environment. Your temperature is setting back at night. Look to improve a couple of strategies there. And then, the next one, digital services. There's a whole thing that I can delve into with that regarding, you know, making sure we're not doing any kind of simultaneous heating and cooling and fault detection and diagnostics. So, a lot of analysis behind the scenes that would save the district from wasted energy. Walk-in freezer cooler controls in your kitchens, again, just optimizing the control there. Work with the Board and the district staff, and Dave's former staff there, looking at some of the specific schools that might still be old, pneumatic controls with air compressors that are actuating things versus now, everything is new, now DDC, Direct Digital Control Systems. So, work with the district on potentially upgrading a couple of the schools there. Obviously, building envelope, you know, insulation, weather stripping. It's the bond between, you know, the indoor environment and the outside. So, you know, keeping the cold out in the winter and the heat in, et cetera. And some miscellaneous measures that we identified here, you know, when we walked in tonight, you could smell the pool. So, opportunity to replace the pool cover there, and that saves energy. But it also improves the indoor air quality, the environment that we're walking into, you know, the moisture, the humidity you feel from it. You know, some plug-load controllers, the TVs that remain on. We know that even after things turn off, there's the phantom loads, so there's some opportunities there. Again, that's up to the district to decide how deeply into the weeds we would like to go. As I tell all of our customers, you know, we have over 100 New York State schools. This really is your project. So, when I talk about getting into the weeds, we can really go as deep into the details as everybody would like. But, you know, this is your project. We look forward to developing it together with your staff, the maintenance facility, all the principals, et cetera. And this is an important project to us, and hope that we've done enough to earn your trust and the opportunity to move forward.
Thank you, Paul. And on that, on that next page, it's an overview of the financials, which is in our response. This just makes it a little easier just to kind of see it all on one. So, this was captured in our executive summary, and I thought it would be appropriate to share today. The savings is broken down by a few measures there that Paul just went through. Electrical, mechanical, the automation, building envelope, and then the miscellaneous measures. The total of that savings comes out to roughly $228,000. So, that $228,000, we're allowed to leverage that up to 18 years if we want to get aid on it, which we're going to want to have. So, we can't go beyond the 18 years. So, that coupled with the aid, and then there's some incentives that you would get from the utility, the rebates and credits, that's $232,000, financially supports the project through the term. The project has been estimated at $4,615,000. After you pay for the project after 18 years, the cash flow is cumulatively positive by $3.9 million. So, it's really a financial, a very strong financial business case. And it's because of the coupling of the aid with the energy mainly. So, this next page lays out the timeline. And in general, the first step to this project would be moving a few items forward. It would be the design, the energy savings calculations, what we call the IGA, the Investment Grade Audit. So, for the next few months, that's what we would be working on. And then, once we honed in on those measures, then we would work to design those measures and then finish assembling the package so that we could submit it to a third-party review on the energy savings calculations. Once that's done, then it would go out to SED for their approval. So, there's multiple approvals that this would walk through before it would be finalized. After SED's approval, then you would seek financing. It typically takes about a month to a month and a half to underwrite, and then you would start your construction, just from a high-level perspective. You could see it takes, you know, quite a bit of time. As you know, capital projects take time to develop. The one we worked on here is we would either do an expedited review or a non-expedited, depending on the timing, in queue when we get to that point. So, right now, we're estimating potentially to do expedited. And that's really where we're at. Now, if it comes out in June, as we're hoping, you'd probably advance some purchase orders to... The project would advance the purchase orders to get in queue on any equipment, like boilers, as an example, where we'd want to get those in by that fall. So, we might even advance those orders while financing is being put together. So, that would be a strategy to try to get it done for that fall and gain that heating season, rather than waiting a whole nother year. So, that's really the snapshot, just kind of a lot of information. But we thought, we just wanted to keep it kind of high-level for you. And if you have any questions, you know, we're available, you know, today, tomorrow, or whenever.
I just had one quick one. After the, it's an 18-year project, but the technology changes so quick. So, maybe five years now, probably 10. Everything's going to be outdated, need to be redone again. But we're still locked into the 18 years.
Okay. That's a good question. The 18 years is a, first of all, the financing is 18 years, all right? The guarantee is a year-by-year guarantee. So, you can cancel it at any time you want, all right? And that's not a significant amount of money. Really, what you're locked in for is this infrastructure. If you go back to the list on the technical review, a lot of this infrastructure is on your capital list right now to get done. So, whether you do it in leverage energy or you do it under infrastructure typically, it's going to happen. Your lighting, your boilers, a lot of this work is going to get done. What I like to do during the IGA, the Investment Grade Audit, is put together that exact useful life by measure. So, we look at it before we make the hard decision. Right now, we're just looking at, what are we going to audit? Down the road, we'll be coming in and saying what our recommendations are and why. Prior to that recommendation, we would look at the useful life of each measure. And if it is a measure that would only last five years, then we would have to look at that and question that, whether we really want to make that an 18-year savings guarantee. So, you're right exactly on what you're saying. Most of the measures that we have here, aside from maybe weatherization, you know, lighting with the burn time, we could look at your 60,000 burn hours on an LED and see if that lasts 18 years, which it probably will with your burn rates. And those are the key details that'll come out of the energy audit, you know, when we get to that point. Most of this equipment, the big expense, the boilers, they're going to be 20, probably to 25-year useful life, is going to have a useful life that'll match the 18 years. Thank you.
Are there questions from the Board?
Yeah. I wanted to see how much of this, to both of you actually, are we going to be able to integrate with the current project? Are we going to be able to integrate with the current project?
That's a really good question. We did talk about that.
Okay.
And I think we've got kind of like a conversation around it. I don't know if you want to answer it or if you want me to try to answer that.
Right. So, the current project that we would have going simultaneously with the EPC is the middle school, Phase 3B is what we're calling it. So, we are in the process, you know, we're in design right now, going to SED in October of this year, hoping for SED approval come probably February, March, go to bid in March, start construction April, May. And that would go through to December of 2024. And looking at John's timeframes, we do overlap some. But the way we have it broken out and phased right now is the renovations at the middle school for the classroom additions, everything would be included in the capital improvement project. Lighting, you know, electrical, all that infrastructure. We're also doing the exterior, the windows, the doors, everything basically but the brick on the middle school. So, if, let's say, you know, bids came in high, we could look at moving stuff to the EPC. But currently, you know, we're out with our documents to Trophy Point. Construction associates is having them estimated right now. That'll give us a good indication as to where we stand. And I think John has a very good detailed list of what he's going to include in the EPC, and we wouldn't try to really merge them if we didn't have to. It just adds on a bunch of scheduling, phasing issues that currently in the marketplace with, you know, supply issues right now, we wouldn't want to compound that.
Right. But we did talk about aligning the products, so everything is the same. We did that at Fulton. We had a same situation, and we worked with the specs to where we aligned everything. And we were not, we had no hitches on that. But the beauty of this is the way our audit is laid out with the timing is we'll have a lot more information when you get to your March. So, I think it's important for us to have, we'll be together as we're developing, and then as you get your pricing back and as we start looking at what retrofits, there may be a glaring opportunity to merge something. But right now, it's good to keep it clean the way it is, just because trying to coordinate ceiling people with lighting people in two different projects makes it really complicated. And I don't think it's a lot of money in the lighting for where you're working. So, it's not like you're moving a significant amount of money over. But we'll have all those numbers to review when we get to that point.
Right. And we would give John, like, you know, he said, we would be in communication. The basis of design for our lighting or anything that we pick for the capital project, we would share with him so that we make sure that we're, you know, giving you the same quality.
Right. And there's an opportunity, like rebate writing, we'd probably rebate write together. So, we would write all the rebates for everything. So, there is going to be, you know, it's going to be connected. Whether we exchange, you know, actual physical infrastructure is yet to be determined. It's whatever's best for you, and it's going to be your decision.
So, were there other questions from the Board? Sorry. All right. So, one of the things, you know, for us to consider is we're kind of going through our efficiency projects. So, as he shared from in the recent slide, you know, there is a $3.9 million opportunity for future cash flow if we were to go down this road in terms of efficiencies that are available to the Board to think about for the future. So, we'll come back and discuss it some more, but I just wanted to make sure we got that information. Okay. So, John, thank you. Amy, thank you. Any other final? You're all set, and thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good? All right. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. All right, Board. Just the last thing I wanted to share. You know, sometimes I know we go, you know, the meetings can be a little bit busy. And we just want to make sure everybody knew that, you know, if you aren't able to follow us, there's information online that people can go and find. You know, the Board meeting agendas and supporting documents are right on our webpage. You can go, and if you scroll down to the bottom of the page and look under District, you can find Board of Education, and just click on it. It's circled there on the screen there. And you'll be able to find information from Board of Education meetings. If you'd like to see what's on the agenda and find information about what's going to be approved or not approved, you can just click on Board Docs. Once you get to that page, you see it circled there, right there underneath the District area there. You can find it there. And then, once you get onto Board Docs, if you just go to the circled area which says Meetings, you can choose, select whichever meeting you'd like to go to and see what is on the agenda, what will be on the agenda, what's coming up. Click on that information, and that will give you, you know, a landing page to be able to find out what's going to be happening on the meeting agenda. And then, you can also, once you get whatever agenda you want, or whichever meeting you want, rather, click on the meeting date, and you can click to view the agenda there as well. We just want to make sure that we're sharing this, just so that, you know, we've had some questions from folks. And how do I find what's going to happen at the Board meeting, what's on the agenda? Well, that's an overview for you to be able to find information. This is going to be on our YouTube page, where all of our meetings are televised, so you can find that information there, just in terms of our public. Okay? All right. One more thing. Also, if you want to see backup information, like what's included in the Board pocket in terms of, you know, information, in terms of backup, or just the details that go into each of those items, you can also look for those agenda items and press the Public Backup Information there as you see where the arrows go, and you can find backup information there as well. All right. So, with that said, if there's no other questions from the Board, are you all set? I'm all set. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Lisa, you want to say something?
So, this is not a question, just to add for the public who are watching this, who don't already go and look at the agenda on a regular basis, that sometimes our Board meetings move very quickly, and we, you know, Karen will call for what's on the motion, and we're, we move very quickly that, yes, you know, we're voting on it, and we don't have a lot of discussion. And part of the reason for that is that we've all seen this and looked through this backup pretty carefully prior to the meeting. So, you know, just so that people understand and can, you know, that we're not like thoughtlessly moving through the agenda without thinking what we're approving, et cetera.
We're all set. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, items A through C. Could I have a motion? Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next is Curriculum with Karen Humphrey.
For Board Approval, Letter A, New York State Textbook Law, Study Skills and Strategies Textbook for the 15-1 Study Skills Class that has been approved in a prior Board meeting.
For item A under Curriculum, could I have a motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next is Personnel with Robert Syracuse.
Good evening. We'd like to separate out 10A, Support Staff Recommendation for Retirements. We have a retirement from our own Karen Canali.
Can I just interrupt for a moment?
Yep.
I just wanted to say, she's going to kill me, but it's all good. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done over the last two years. Karen is up for retirement. I've probably taken her retirement notice and thrown it out 15 times. And I'm begging her to still help us out here and there. But Karen is fantastic. She's a hard worker. She takes calls. She does, you name it, she does it and gets it done. And I just personally wanted to say thank you for your many years of service, especially the last two and some quarter. Thank you, and we wish you the best of luck. I don't know if we can all give her a round of applause for her almost 40 years of dedication. Graduate of the District and almost 40 years here in the District. So, thank you, Karen, for everything. Okay, Bob, I just wanted to...
Sure. Our other retirement is our Senior Custodian, Gar Owens.
Could I have a motion, please, on item A?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Letters B through I as presented.
Items B through I, could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Letter J, Extra Compensatory Position Recommendations at OHS or OMS Sports, as presented.
Item J, could I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second?
I'll be the other one if you got the other person.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't hear the other person.
Pam? Any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to pull the varsity girls' basketball coach from that vote.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Want to oppose?
I'm too. I don't know if you see me.
Pam, you're also opposed? Okay. Motion approved, six, or five-two. The item J has been removed, pulled from the agenda.
No, just separated.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say pulled? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. And it was, that was J again? For items J? Items, I'm sorry.
Maybe the remaining items that are left in J.
The remaining items? Could I have a motion for the remaining items, please?
I'll make the motion.
Jim?
We had a motion for the original, so he has to split the vote, right? So, the original motion still stands. We just have to vote on the original.
As amended.
Motion as, just everybody except the girls' coach. And then, we do a second vote on just that item because they were split out.
Okay. So, if I could have discussion on the, all the items except the last one, since it's already had a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next would be the last item only, if I could have a motion.
It's, so splitting it made the motion?
Yes.
And the original motion, so now it's just a vote?
Yes.
Which, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Tom Chappa?
This is to remove?
No, this is to approve. This is to approve the...
I think we actually maybe need to have discussion.
I know. I don't think we had a discussion. Right? If we wanted to. That's what Lisa was saying.
Almost nothing you can discuss on personnel issues.
Would there be discussion on the item?
I, I don't want to, so we can't discuss personnel issues. I do want to say that we have a process put in place and a committee put in place to make these decisions, and I think as a Board of Education, we are like governing, but we use the, or we allow the administrators to administer the program. And I think it, I guess I'm not comfortable with like these kind of external political interventions into the processes that we've put into place on this kind of decision-making.
At this time, could I have a motion?
Any other discussion?
Right, we've got a motion.
Any other discussion?
Pardon me?
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I've said my piece with the board and proved, tried to prove my point. I just want to say to the public that this is the tightest coaching staff I've seen on the girls' basketball team in a long time. And coaches Babcock, Lavner, and Reno have created more than just a team, they've created a family. He pushes for the inclusion of all players in our district and allows anybody third grade or above to come to his practices. There's not another coach in the, in the district that does that. It's obvious that he has support from his players, from his family, from his, the parents, and from the community. It just doesn't seem like he has the support from the district. That's all I got.
Any other discussion? I will now do a roll call vote for the last item on that resolution. Tom Chapa? Dave Christopoli?
No.
Pamela Dowd? This is voting on the position. Okay.
Voting to approve the recommendation is what we're doing, right?
Correct.
I vote yes.
Lisa Glidden?
Yes.
James McKenzie?
No.
Sean Anmek?
No.
Heidi Sweeney?
No.
It is a 5-2 vote. The resolution has failed. Okay, that's next, agenda items?
Items K through S as presented.
Items K through S, could I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next then, the agenda is finance with Nancy Squires. Items A through C are contracts as presented. Items A through C, could I have a motion, please?
Move them.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Items D through F as presented. Items D through F, could I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yep, and D, did we get other requests from other vendors?
We did not.
Do we usually?
This is the first RFP that I've been involved in with the district for an energy performance contract.
Okay. And do we get one for E, the building condition survey? Do we get more prices than just the one?
No.
Can I just add, you're not required to do additional folks, so this is some specialized work, and you, there are some things that you don't have to have multiple people to do the work with. So we did start this work with Siemens, I think at the end of last year, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
And the board agreed to move down that way, just, just to let you know.
With the building condition survey, I know it's every five years. We haven't gotten prices before, just to check pricing from competitors.
So if the board would like to do that, but, you know, most of our work, I think we started this work...
Well, no, I think they already started, but I was just curious if we did it or not. I didn't see anything in the backup for it.
No, I, I think if, if the board wanted us to go with a different person, you would just need to let us know. But we've been with them, and that's the group that was scheduled to do the work. And so that, you know, we, we followed through with what we, what the plan was. So this is new to us. We didn't have that before.
We're talking about Siemens, correct?
Siemens, and he's talking about now the building condition.
Okay. Right, yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Items G through J, additional contracts as presented. Items G through J, could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I was wondering if we could learn a little bit more about Thought Exchange.
Sure. So Thought Exchange is a tool that is used to survey your community on whatever topic that you'd like to, to survey them on. It's used especially when there are big systems, opportunities that districts or folks are considering. So what happens basically is that a thought will go into the survey tool, and then it will be sent out throughout the community. And then everyone who, who would like to participate can participate in the survey, and it leads itself to multiple questions or thoughts. And the goal is to try to get as much feedback as you can from your community with, and it is confidential, it is not information that's tied to one person. And once you get all of the folks' thoughts into this system, what happens is that it, it segregates it into themes. And it provides a report for, like the board in this case, to really be able to help get voice from the community in a pretty efficient manner and way, so that it might help to basically inform decision-making. Many districts use Thought Exchange, particularly when they're thinking about big systems, issues or concerns. And some use it just to get feedback from the community right away about things that might be happening in the learning environment or, or learning community, basically.
And this is for a one-year contract?
Yes.
So it's not like software we're buying that we get to manage it? It's a work contract with them?
Right, yeah, our goal is to try to, especially with all the studying that we're doing, is to try to...
No, that's good. It's an interesting, it's a lot of money, but it's an interesting thing to try to see what it looks like for a year, what actual we get out of it, so, thank you.
And it is aided, by the way, as well.
Oh, that's big.
Wasn't it aided, if I remember correctly? Yeah, it is aided through...
Okay, that's even bigger, cool. Thank you.
As well, thank you, that, just coming from the conference that we did last week regarding community involvement, community communication, that's another tool and response to engage as mu, as much of the community as we can. So I think it's a valuable piece to have right now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Items K through N are donations as presented. Items K through N, could I have a motion, please? Second? Any discussion? Just like to thank all those places for their donations to our school district. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Items O through Z, maintenance agreements as presented. Items O through Z, could I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second? Dave? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Items double A through double G as presented. Items double A through double G, if I could have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
Tom? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is items from the board. Would there be any items from the board tonight? And I, oop?
Oh, I've got an item. I just want to say, we did have the opportunity, Heidi, Lisa, and I had to go to, over to Albany to a conference, a NISP conference, and it was great, and it was very inspiring. I think we learned an awful lot there, and I'm hoping to put it into practice. It was also great to see some of the presenters and realize that as a district, we are somewhat similar and in similar situations. We are in better situations in some districts. We're in not as good as others. But it was a great opportunity to see and learn and talk to other people about how they function and what we can do to implement into our district to achieve and move forward. So it was great.
Any other items from the board? At this time, would the board like to move to executive session?
So I'm wondering if we can just, there is a workshop that the board is supposed to enter into now. I'm wondering, once we finish with the workshop, I have very few items for executive, but can we do an executive after that? And there would be no need to come back for business, if that's possible.
How long do we think the workshop will last?
Well, it's supposed to start at seven and go no later than nine.
Till nine?
Yeah, we may be done earlier. Depends upon what, what we're doing.
I, just being for myself, I'd hate to leave anybody waiting longer, but I don't have the whole night, so I don't mind missing exec if other people are doing that, but I don't.
Or I could just hold, I, I don't, I could hold the executive if you'd like to the next meeting. We have a meeting coming up on the sixth. If there's something faster, if there's something I need to, we can always come back quicker if we need to ask for another meeting. Would you prefer to do that?
I guess it always depends on how urgent the matters are. Yeah.
My thought was if you gave me a couple minutes after the workshop, I could probably be done in about 10, 15 minutes, if that's possible.
That's good. For me, that works for me.
So maybe we just go into the closed workshop for the board.
Okay, go into...
Closed workshop for the board, and then we will need to come back for an executive once that's done, and then we should be all set.
So at this time, the board will move to the board workshop, and after, if someone could motion into executive session?
Yeah, we'll require them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.